All right. Good afternoon, everyone. And this is Currie County's Board of Commissioners meeting for June 20th at 4:00 PM. And I'll ask everyone to stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And first up on our list is amendment and approval of the agenda. So I do have one thing that I'd like to add on the consent agenda. We can put it there. And that is basically it's authorizing Luke from Aquatic Safety to accept a grant for And that's from Currie Health Foundation, and it goes towards his aquatic safety program. And that's the only change that I had.
I think so.
Jay, anything?
No.
Okay.
Move approval as amended.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. Next up is general public comments. And I would just remind everybody that there's a three-minute time limit on your public comments. Commissioner Trost has his timer there. There's a timer at the podium to remind you. And if you go over, I'll just let you know that we need you to wrap things up. So first up is Debbie Brown.
Can I go last?
You're first up. Sorry.
I didn't know when I was supposed to hand these out. They were all in order. Now we just need God.
Thank you.
Yes. I live outside the urban growth area. Oh, the timer's right here. Yay. I spoke to you a few weeks ago about short-term rentals and ADUs. So I've been researching it a little bit and have noticed that we have a slight problem. And it's coming to a head tomorrow at 5:00 is when all of our letters have to be in with the planning director. I stated that ADUs could be used and were being used as short-term rentals. They are, in fact. The primary purpose of the ADU was not for short-term rentals and definitely not outside the urban growth boundaries of this county. On the top page, you'll see what the ADUs are. Accessory dwelling units. STRs are short-term rentals. It's very specific. This is right off of your website. The next pages, you'll see, again, off your website, what an ADU is.
I think you got these off of Gold Beach's website.
Okay.
Well, okay.
Yeah. You're right. City Limits has a few different guidelines than we do.
Sure.
Okay? But still, outside the urban growth boundaries, STRs are not allowed in ADUs. And if they do ask for a conditional permit, there are very strict guidelines. Two acres, I believe sometimes it's one, but not .5. So I decided to pull some STR applications. And if you look at your land use applications submitted, and go to page five, and then six, so you've got STR 2413 down at the bottom, and at the top, you have 2414 at the top of page six. In the next section of papers, you'll have those applications. Now, these are two units in one single-family dwelling zoned RCR1, it's my understanding.
RCR stands for?
Rural Community Residential.
Okay.
Or Residential Community, no, Rural Community Residential. The deadline for this is tomorrow at 5:00. We are asking for a postponement of any decision by the planning director until we have fully looked at this because we don't believe with all the cuts and with code enforcement gone and the planning department in question, we don't have enough information. All these STRs that are on this land use application at this point, I think they should all be suspended until we figure out what's going to happen with code enforcement because you can't get your tax dollars unless you have code enforcement. You can't get a permit without having code enforcement and planning department. And then the business license comes from tourism. Now, this one gentleman mentioned that he didn't know. Well, you'll notice on the back page, he has an STR already on Wedderburn. So he's fully aware of these permits. And also, he was running an illegal Airbnb in 2023. As you'll see in your papers, you'll also see where he paid the transient lodging tax for a short-term rental without a permit. Now, it states very clearly in your guidelines for ADUs and short-term rentals that it may not be advertised on any venue for any reason before it's properly permitted. This has been advertised on Airbnb since late 2022 or early 2023. So that's not allowed either. We are asking for you to please hold off. We'll have our letters in by 5:00 tomorrow, but we'd like to knock on doors. We'd like to be given some time because it took a lot for me to get this information. I had to fill out FOIAs, which was ridiculous. I had to, this is public record information. And you do have a lot of these STRs that are awaiting permits.
We do. And we spoke a little bit about that earlier today.
Okay. Is my time up?
Yeah, it's.
Okay. So respectfully, I would ask the commissioners, require the planning commission to hold a public hearing in order to adequately hear and assess the disruptive disruption this issue has caused to our well-settled and quiet community. This is Naseka Beach, this specific case.
Okay. Do we have Debbie's contact information?
Yes.
I just want to say regarding the time period tomorrow, the deadline, we don't set the deadline. That's statutory.
That's fine.
So they don't have the ability to waive that. So we'll certainly, you submitted information. If you submit more, it'll all be taken into account while we make the decision. And certainly, it's a thing that all this stuff is new information. I think it's helpful to have that. And I think that all of that should. I have severe concerns, as I told you previously, I have severe concerns with the STR ordinance as written. I don't think that it's, I don't, I don't agree with you that code enforcement is the answer. And as I told you before, the reason for that is you have to work through the courts to get that. That'll be a net loss for the county.
I don't think so.
Oh, no, I, I know.
It is, but it's code enforcement for everything, the entire county. I mean weeds, fire.
No, but I, but the thing is regarding short-term rentals and the application of code enforcement for that, that is very costly. And having met with the judges and learned their intentions on how they intend to enforce and the code enforcement violations, I would want to address it in a way that would be, that would be more license-based so that it's not, it's not something that is litigated every time. It would be, it would be an annual, you would need to, you would need to conform with the rules of the county on an annual basis. And if you don't, if you don't, then you don't get a license and you don't get to.
May I respond to that? The litigation can be a nightmare, but if county council is sitting next to code enforcement and makes sure that he has the proof that he needs, this was a shut, open and shut case. We have advertisement, that's part of the problem right there. We have no permits and actual rental income that your tax office, your transient tax office collected in 2023, in the beginning, in the first, second quarter.
So as far as that goes, I just want to say that if, if, if the Board of Commissioners decides to fund the county council's office to the tune of an extra several hundred thousand dollars a year so that we can, we can afford to litigate all of those things, if the leveling need to be litigated, then that would be a foolish move. So my, my idea is to avoid litigation. In general, in general, avoiding litigation to achieve a business outcome that's favorable is the way to go. Litigation, as an attorney, I can tell you, litigation is generally expensive and does not return the money that you think. But I, you know, if you've had a different experience, that's fine. But that's, that would be a decision that they'd need to make.
Well, let's do this. Debbie's got some new information. We'll take that into consideration and then get back to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Before the.
Because tomorrow at 5:00 is when the letters are due. However, council and the planning department do not have to make a decision on that until they decide.
Oh, I'm not making a decision until we have an extensive review of everything.
Thank you.
But I'm just saying the deadline for, the deadline is statutory. And if we, if we vary that, then the applying party has a cause of action against the county. So we just have to live by the deadline. But, but yeah, we can, we'll, we'll certainly take, I mean, all this is pretty, pretty, pretty.
Damning.
Weighty evidence. So I think it's gonna, it's gonna have, definitely take a look.
I appreciate it.
And to be honest, I don't know that it's gonna go to the planning commission. I kind of think I'll just make the decision.
Yeah.
You know, it's gonna be pretty straightforward.
Thank you, Debbie.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Lynn Coker.
My name's Lynn Coker, resident of Gold Beach. So about, almost to the day, a month ago, we, my wife and I voted for the sheriff's levy. And though we were disappointed that it didn't make it through, we weren't surprised. So if we roll the calendar forward to today, today, I'm a little bit surprised, but I'm hopeful. And what I'm surprised about is the groundwork that has been done and the pace of the work that's unfolded in the four weeks since the turn down of the sheriff's levy. What we discovered was that our Currie neighbors made a simple request, and that was that our local county officials live within our means and deliver the best possible outcomes given the limited resources that were available. I'm hopeful because of the dedication and the professionalism shown by our elected leadership. That's across the board, both the BOC as well as our clerks and assessor and such. And frankly, it's humbling to see the kind of dedication we get from the Budget Committee. I mean, that is pretty amazing to watch those men jump in and wrestle this thing to the ground. So with that said, I'm appreciative of the fact that there remains more work. There's probably very impactful conversations today. I don't want that to deteriorate, to take us off track relative to getting everything done in time to comply with the state statutes, but I do understand that there's still some arm wrestling going on. Finally, I just want to wrap up and say thank you to you gentlemen and the people that you represent for doing such a great job moving us forward. This has been just a real hill to climb. Thank you.
Yep. It's been a tough couple of weeks, Lynn. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Mark Nast, you're up next.
Mark Nast, 958-00 Ferguson Ranch Road, Gold Beach. Again, I kind of want to echo something similar to what Lynn just stated, which is, is that that's this whole levy thing. I think you guys did a pretty marvelous job, and despite the fact that it went down. But I think that there were some things that you did that were really important. And, and I'm assuming that there's gonna be, we gotta go forward because we're still strapped for revenue. And because we're still strapped for revenue and where does it come from and whatnot, one of the simplistic things that one of my neighbors said, and this is a quote, "They asked for too much." Okay? And so one of the things when, when the levy was first proposed, that was kind of one of my initial responses was that, wow, this is gonna be a big hit on my, on my property tax. And I'm wondering why we didn't have maybe a survey or a tiered approach that we could kind of sort of pick from. And I know you don't pick from in a vote, all right? But the point of all this is, is that what you guys did, I think, is quite different than what has been done before. I think that you brought information to the table that hadn't been brought to the table before. And I know that we're gonna have to continue doing similar sorts of efforts. And I would like to be part of the brainstorming that has got to take place in the near future with regards to what are we gonna have to try to do different this time around that maybe will have a bigger effect. Okay? So I've got ideas. They may be bad ideas, they may be not, but it's like brainstorming stuff, and I would really like to be a part of the brainstorming.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
And you're right, the work continues for sure. Next up is Carla.
My name is Carla McMorn. I live at 32890 Surfside Drive. I'm 82 years old. I was looking for a place to retire to. Quiet, peaceful, on the ocean. My dream, okay? And it started off pretty nice. It was very quiet, very beautiful, and I love it. I still love it. But since the people down at the end of the street have decided to forego all the rules and regulations that were already in place, and now they're pressing for the, um.
Surfside.
Yeah.
We know what you're saying.
You know what I'm trying to say. I'm not happy. My grandkids play out there in the sidewalk, sidewalk, the street when they come to visit. Those women, especially the women, come rushing down the street, and if you ask them to slow down, you get the finger, you know? They don't want it, they don't care about the residents in that area. It's a personal thing for me. And I just want to be unrecorded, just saying, I'm really opposed to what they're trying to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Surfside paved?
No.
No, I didn't think so.
No.
I mean, it wasn't years ago, so it's not even a two-lane road, really.
No, it's not.
No.
And next up is Julie.
Hello, and thank you. My name is Julie Scott, and I live in the same area of the property that we've been speaking of. I live at 32915 Andy Street. And I am straight across the gully from the property. And I also have lived in that house since 1982. So I have, like Carla, enjoyed many years of peacefulness where I chose to live. I didn't really have a huge opinion on STRs before what has been going on in our neighborhood has started up. Our roads, both on Andy Street, Williams that connects to Surfside, are all, like you were saying, unpaved roads. And they are maintained by the property owners in the area. I know from our experience on Andy Street, it's really hard to get all the neighbors on board at the same time financially to keep the roads in good repair. People, when they're staying on the other vacation rentals in the past, they, they take a tour through the neighborhood, which Andy Street would be. It creates a lot of dust. It creates a lot of different issues. They don't always drive slowly, and that's one problem. The lights coming from the property that we are speaking of have been extremely irritating. I like to walk out onto my deck and look at the stars at night. I have lights shining nightly. There's not even anyone staying there. And I know for a fact there have been people staying there before it was a legal B and B or STR or whatever it's supposed to be because we've dealt with the noise or other things that have happened over there on the property over the years. So I would just ask that the council really consider, and not to mention the fact that the owners of the property, number one, are hard to get a hold of. I've walked to the property to try to ask for the lights to be turned down, found out that they actually have a property manager, which I spoke to, and I've known her for many years. And for a time, the lights that shone from their property that, I don't even know why they'd be lighting this area up. It's not an area, now it's a parking area. Maybe that's, I know they've done a lot of developing there now. They've put rock in there, they've put, and that's what destroyed the road over there on Surfside, all the construction going through. I don't even know where my time is, or am I doing okay?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. Well, lots of issues going on over there, so I really ask that you really reconsider going on.
Question, they have a property manager? How long have they had a, for, they have a property manager for ongoing business?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
They do have a.
Short-term rental, so when you, when they're a short-term rental, people, they actually have a designated representative for them?
That's who I was told to contact. Yeah.
And she acknowledged that she was that person that she had.
Yes. Oh, yeah, she, she totally knew the property.
You can submit that, you can submit that information to us because, I mean, that, that.
The property manager?
Yeah, that violates, I mean, that's, if you're running a business and that you need to have approved, but you're running it in advance, you sort of made the case for us. So.
I kind of wondered why code enforcer never brought that up on the last little go-around we had with this.
Yeah, well, we'll, so get it to my office, and you get it in, and we'll deal with it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right. That was our last request for public comment. So now we will move on to consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second that.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. So now we move to the public hearing. And gotta follow some specific guidelines regarding a public hearing. So this is a public hearing before the Board of Commissioners conducted pursuant to ORS 1988-857, annexation without election by petition or landowner. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. The hearing is now open at 4:22 PM. We have six annexations into the OFER Rural Fire Department. And each of these need to be motioned on separately. Natasha made me very well aware of that.
Yeah.
With some pretty strict rules. I'll go over the, the six of them. One is 24-03. The owner is the Fox family. One is, one has, the next one has two, 24-04 and 24-05, and that owner is the Lee family. And then the next one also has two, 24-06, 24-07, and the owner is Brindaza family.
Brinza.
Brinza?
Yeah.
Brinza. And then the final one is 24-08, and the owner is the Eisenberg family. Do any of the folks that I mentioned wish to speak at all?
Okay.
All right. And we have no other public comments. Is there any motions?
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll move to approve petition for annexation for BOC, annexation number 24-03.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero.
Oh, I was, I was, I'll move to approve petition for annexation, BOC, annexation number 24-04.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero.
I'll move to approve petition for annexation, BOC, annexation number 24-05.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero.
I'll move to approve petition for annexation, BOC, annexation number 24-06.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, passes three to zero.
I'll move to approve petition for annexation, BOC, annexation number 24-07.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, passes three to zero.
And I'll move to approve petition for annexation, BOC, annexation number 24-08.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. If there's no further discussion, then I will close this public hearing at 4:25 PM. That will conclude our public hearing section of the agenda, and now we will go on to discussion action items. So in discussion action items, we have several ordinances, and I'm gonna let Ted explain these ordinances. These are revisions to the code. All of these things were discussed in detail in the Budget Committee process. Each of these relates to the passing of our budget. We have to make some changes to, to accommodate that, so Ted can explain in more detail. Ted?
Okay. I'm gonna turn on my mic. Natasha, I did it. Okay. So we learned in our, in our surveys going through the budget process year, which, this year, which was the first year that we've actually had accurate numbers since I've been here that we were able to rely on. We were able to, we had accurate representations from the, from the treasurer's office first time with our new treasurer. We have, we, we had a groundwork that we're able to work from. And going forward, we, we discovered that, that there was a lack of transparency in the way some of the monies that have been, that some of the revenues that are generated for this county have been, have been being expressed in previous budgets and through, I'm not sure, I think, I think it was just a misunderstanding of the statutes that, for example, we have, we have marijuana retail sales revenue that comes in. That money had been, had been designated to the sheriff's office for, for use in its operations, but it was not expressed in a budget in a way that you could see it. And so it was sort of overlooked year by year. And the reason that was is because there was a, there was an improper interpretation of the law that says, for some reason, they, it was, it was kind of assumed that you were supposed to keep tax revenues that were generated secret. I don't know where that comes from because that kind of flies in the face of the entire of taxation in a representative republic. But anyway, so we got that, we got that solved, and we noticed that between marijuana retail sales revenue and also transient lodging tax, that we have 95% of the 30% of the transient lodging tax that's generated through STRs and other, other, other methods, that money had been dedicated to the sheriff's office specifically. While, while those monies may well end up being used in the sheriff's office because that is our, our biggest need within the county, the county commission and the, and the Budget Committee needs to have flexibility in determining how to allocate those monies fairly to the, all the mandated services. And so it was the recommendation of the Budget Committee that those, that those two restrictions be rescinded and, and monies that were specifically held just for the sheriff's office use be reallocated directly into the general fund so that the Budget Committee and the, and the commissioners can, can make that an actual determination in toto about how revenues are supposed to be distributed for running all of the, all of the departments of this county. So the first one is, does anybody have any questions about that?
No.
Got it? Okay.
I think it's a good explanation, actually.
Okay. So the first one is, would be revising that marijuana retail sales tax. Ordinance number, oh, this is a little history. Ordinance number 1603 imposed the marijuana retail sales tax, and ordinance number 1604 implemented marijuana retail sales tax. Due to a clerical error, both ordinance 1603 and 1604 were written into county code as Article II, Division 16, when it should have been organized with the provisions of ordinance 1603, codified as Article II, Division 15, and the provisions of ordinance 1604, codified as Article II, Division 16. That's all kind of rubia talk. And so, anyway, we, so Article II, Division 16 was amended by ordinance 1911, which changed the allocation of funds from the general fund. Originally, marijuana retail sales revenue were from, I think. Originally marijuana retail sales uh, revenue were from, I think, twenty fifteen on, up till twenty nineteen, where um, those were all, maybe it was twenty seventeen, but for the first few years that we got marijuana revenue, that money went directly to the, to the General Fund. And then that was modified in twenty nineteen, which resulted in there being lost track of how that money was being applied and used. And in fact, it wasn't used, it was, for the most part, about half of it, close to, I wanna say four hundred and forty thousand dollars, was, was just sitting idle in a, in an account that didn't, and it was supposed to be used for Sheriff's Department operations. So we wanna remedy that, so it doesn't happen again, so that we can, we can keep the Sheriff's Office functioning at the most efficient manner possible. And so, let's see, they've um, uh, in twenty, that changed it to, and, and made it uh, dedicated for a separate fund for Sheriff's Opera, Office Operations. The uh, Budget Committee has recommended that the amendments, the amendments adopted as ordinance nineteen eleven be rescinded, and the funds collected from the marijuana retail sales tax, tax be again deposited into the General Fund. So that would be the first one, and we would be looking for a motion.
Okay, I'll move to rescind ordinance number nineteen dash one-one. Adopt Article Two, Division fifteen, imposing marijuana retail sales tax as set forth in ordinance number sixteen dash zero three, to correct a clerical error and amend Article Two, Division sixteen, to reflect the allocation of marijuana retail sales tax funds to the General Fund for general distribution.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero.
All right, the next one is the revision to Curry County Code transient lodging tax. Purpose of this ordinance is to modify the allocation of the general services portion of transient lodging tax to the General Fund for distribution. Currently, the balance of the thirty percent of T L T revenue is not restricted for tourism and tourism promotion-related expenses, or administration is allocated to the Sheriff's Office. Now, the balance not restricted, which is essentially ninety-five percent of that thirty percent, will, will go to the General Fund directly. On the proposed code revisions, only section eight point oh two dash, or point one four zero two B was modified. The remainder of the provision remains the same. So we'd be looking for a motion for that as well.
I'll move to approve the proposed ordinance modifying T L T fund distribution to reflect the allocation of the balance of unrestricted T L T revenues to the General Fund.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. And then next up Ted is an update on county fees.
All right, county fees um, are generally um, uh, adjusted effective July one, and then the, the following date is, I wanna say, Rabia, is that December, when's the, when's the, they're-
That would be December thirty-first to effective January first.
So um, anyway, we're here at the July first effective, effective date for changes. Um, all the uh, all of the departments have submitted their, their fee changes. The ones that are attached here are just the ones that you hadn't seen previously. These are the, we, we, I wanted the new fair manager to be able to go through the um, the proposed, or the, the fee, fees at the fairgrounds. There were, there were some that were proposed, and, and I wanted her to look at that, and she has done so. Also, um, the uh, let's see, do we have the um, yeah, yeah, we got the Sheriff's Department as well. The Sheriff's Office fees, when, when I, when I looked at what the approved fees were, they didn't match what was on the Sheriff's Department website. So it turned out that, as far as I can see, those fees had not been updated by the B O C. They've been, they've been raised, but they have not been updated officially since I wanna say twenty eighteen. So, so I just changed the fees to, to match what's on their, match what's on their website, which also conforms with, with every other county of our size in um, in the state. So there, everything's in order, and I would recommend uh, approval of the fees.
I'll make a motion to approve updated county fee schedule effective July one, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Real quick, can we do this some discussion?
Oh, absolutely.
So um, first off, thank you to all of the um, departments and, and Director Fitzgerald. This was uh, another one of the requests from the Budget Committee to assess all of our fees. As we do, generally, we should be doing obviously well on an annual basis. And uh, you know, given the, given the current financial circumstances, uh, you know, there, there was a, a need for some uh, large-scale uh, fee adjustments. And uh, I do appreciate the fee adjustments at the event center. They seem to be severely outdated, um, in terms of what the fee was for what you were receiving. So I appreciate uh, how much work was put into, to that uh, by the fair manager, and subsequently, I'm sure the fair board, so.
I wanna go, I, before we do, before we close this out, I do wanna read the, I wanna, I wanna get on the record, reading the ordinances, the two, the two ordinances.
Okay.
And just do that. Um, this, the first one was in the matter of an ordinance amending Article Eight, Division Two of Curry County Code. Whereas ordinance uh, nineteen oh one dated January twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, imposed transient lodging tax in Curry County upon subsequent approval of voters at the May twenty-nineteen election. And whereas ordinance number nineteen oh two dated January twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, implemented T L T in Curry County upon subsequent approval of voters at the May twenty-nineteen election. And whereas ordinance nineteen thirteen dated December second night, twenty nineteen, amended the provisions of ordinance number nineteen oh two to reflect, reflect certain administrative changes. And whereas ordinance number twenty dash zero two dated November fourth, or fourth, twenty twenty, amended the provisions of Article Eight, Divisions One and Two, reg, regarding the allocation, use, and dispersment of T L T funds. And whereas order number two-three-two-eight-six dated July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, repealed ordinance number twenty zero two, returning the distribution of, of funds to that which was originally proposed to the voters of Curry County. And whereas, due to the current budgetary con, uh, constraints of the county, um, the board has determined it is appropriate to lift the restriction um, of section eight point zero two, point one four zero two B, regarding the allocation of the budget of the T L T funds not otherwise restricted by statute that are currently allocated to the Sheriff's Office for tr, for patrol. And uh, that's, that should do it, that's the, that's the body of the language itself, so I'll read the next one as well.
That was the transient-
That, that was the transient logic, logic tax.
Can I, quick question on that?
Yeah.
We didn't have much discussion there, but um, so, one of the things I think would be, um, I don't know if this addressed it fully, but something that I think we should consider is um, the way that, that current T L T tax has been kind of split up was um, seventy percent of it has to be due towards tourism and promotions. And we were splitting that seventy percent, thirty-five percent, thirty-five percent between uh, tourism and promotions um, that are provided by the county, and the rest going to facilities um, at the fair. And, but what I would, I think, maybe a way to oversee that uh, with a little more security would be to ensure that that money stays in an account, uh, located within the county. And it, when, when a facility project comes up, then the fair board makes a recommendation to this B O C to transfer those dollars over for said uh, project. Um, in the past, it's been just directly transferred into their, into their account, and we, we saw some misspending of those dollars that were outside of the parameters of tourism and promotion. And I think if we, if we put these safeguards in place, it would prevent that kind of spending from occurring.
And also, also, I mean, the agreement that the County Commissioners have with the fair board requires that any spending be actually approved by, by, by the County Commissioners.
Um, and I'm sure the current fair board that's in place isn't gonna have any issues with that.
Yeah. Yeah, it just seems like it's, uh, if we're not putting systems in place to protect um, county assets after we're gone, then I think we're um, fully doing um, our service, so. It just seems like one of those, it's, it's an easy safeguard to put in place to ensure that those dollars are spent correctly.
Would there very, be any need to make a, an amount, you know, like over five thousand, or?
Well, I think, I mean, if, if it was in-
Expedia things, if that would, I don't know.
Well, I mean, it, it doesn't take much more to be expedient than to provide a request, right? So, um, now we could put in there provisions to say request under such, such amount can be approved by the Board Chair. Um, and it, you know, amounts over said amount have to be approved by the Commission as a whole, but-
Or go through Ted, and he can contact all three of us.
But just having that, having those monies-
Yep.
You know, um, in an account that's um, transparent to everyone in the county.
I, I, I think, you know, you can pretty much leave the, the fair board is, they're, they're, they got a pretty good handle on how things are going forward, and they'll be able to, if they want to make, if they've got big plans, they're gonna definitely be submitting it, you know, in a, in a way that, that you'll have time to review it, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I've got one more to read, if I can do that.
Yep.
Okay, this is in the matter of an ordinance rescinding ordinance number nineteen eleven and relabeling certain county code divisions marijuana retail sales tax. Whereas ordinance sixteen oh three dated May fourth, twenty sixteen, imposed marijuana retail sales tax in Curry County upon subsequent approval of voters at the November eighth, twenty sixteen election. And whereas ordinance number sixteen oh four dated May fourth, twenty sixteen, implemented marijuana retail sales tax in Curry County upon subsequent approval of voters at the November eighth, twenty sixteen election. And whereas, due to a clerical error, both ordinance number sixteen oh three and sixteen oh four were written into Curry County, into county code as Article Two, Division sixteen, when the proper manner, manner, manner of organization would have been to codify the provisions of ordinance sixteen oh three imposition as Article Two, Division fifteen. And the provisions of ordinance sixteen oh four implementation as Article Two, Division sixteen. And whereas Article Two, Division sixteen was amended by ordinance number nineteen eleven dated June twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, and this, that amendment consisted of changes to section two point one six, point one eight zero, sub one, administration of funds. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners has recommended that the amendments adopted by ordinance number nineteen eleven be rescinded, and the funds collected from marijuana retail sales tax be deposited into the General Fund. Now therefore, the Curry County Commissioners hereby orders as follows, the ordinance shall be known as ordinance number twenty-four oh six, and may be cited as ordinance rescinding ordinance number nineteen eleven and relabeling certain Curry, certain county code divisions related to marijuana retail sales tax funds. The ordinance is enacted pursuant to the authority of O R S two oh three point oh three five, and any subsequent amendments thereto. This ordinance is, is adopted for the following purposes, to recognize Curry County Pro Division, or reorganize Curry County Code divisions, codify the provisions of ordinance sixteen oh three imposition in the adopted county code as Article Two, Division fifteen, affirm the codification of the provisions of ordinance sixteen oh four implementation in the adopted county code as amended by ordinance number nineteen eleven as Article Two, Division sixteen, and to rescind ordinance number nineteen eleven and its amendment to Article Two, Division sixteen, regarding the assignment of marijuana retail sales tax funds, and amend Article Two, Division sixteen, to reflect the, the assignment of marijuana retail sales tax funds to the County General Fund for general allocation, uh, adoption, the provisions of this ordinance, and the attached Article Two, Divisions fifteen and sixteen incorporated herein by reference are hereby adopted, shall replace any existing provisions of the divisions, um, shall be effective immediately upon the date of this ordinance, and shall remain in force in effect until otherwise ordained by the Board of County Commissioners, Curry County Commissioners.
All right, so the readings are complete. We do have a motion uh, with a second on the table, which is regarding uh, fees. So now I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, that motion passes three to zero. So next up on the agenda is Director of County Operations update.
Um, let's see, okay, well, I think we, you know, a lot of what we've been working on were, were related to the required changes uh, happening, you know, based on the, on the Budget Committee activities, and, and we've talked about a lot of what happened here today. Um, I'll, I'll go through on, on kind of a lighter note, just what's going on with some of our departments, so that you'll know that, that even though uh, you know, things are, things are a little bit stressful here at the county, everybody's still doing a great job. I wanted to give you a road department update. Road Department has been working on their chip seal project. They ended up ahead of schedule, and they're, they're wrapping it up, I think tomorrow, they're um, they're uh, they-
They're working tomorrow?
Or maybe they're wrapping it up today, but they got it, they got it done, had a schedule.
Before ten, so I just-
Yeah, and then um, and then they've been helping out at the fairgrounds and, and coming in there when they can. They basically opened up that area in front of the horse barns, so that, so that uh, paddock can be built there, so outdoor riding can happen. I, I don't know that's gonna happen before, I doubt it's gonna happen before the fair, but it is a project that's gonna be ongoing, and will, will allow uh, a lot of the, the sort of unused parts of the, of the fairgrounds to get back into use. Let's see, um, they've also, if you recall, the settlement that we entered, entered into with the Port of Burgess Harbor to remove the sediment from the silt trap, and, and they, they, since it hadn't been done for several years by the, you know, the, the road department had not been maintaining that sediment trap, it resulted in, in um, pretty substantial sedimentation into the, into the, I wanna say, the southeast corner of the commercial basin down there, which, uh, which resulted in uh, dredging, to clear, clear that up. But the Port of Burgess Harbor was able to coordinate on a bigger dredging project, and so we got, we got our stuff dredged at cost, and we'd entered into agreement to uh, into an agreement to, to help them with that. And we have now gotten the sediment, it's been up drying out in the boatyard for some time, and it's been deemed um, clean fill by the D E Q, so it's getting moved off next week, and that, that problem now. Now, moving forward, we have a standard operating procedure where we, where we keep track, we, you know, we have to, have to-
Check it.
Monitor the se, the sediment trap on a regular basis. And as you know, when we have high-flow events all through the winter, that sediment trap can fill up in one, in one storm. It's a, it's a, it's a terrible design, and it should never have been built, but that's the one we have. And, and in fact, there used to be a, there used to be a, a settling pond farther up, up that creek um, on, I think, the Thompson's property, and that was taken out. And that would be a way that, that would be a much lower cost method of, of addressing this. And down the road, I think everybody would be really happy if we didn't have to do this. This is a, this is a high-cost method of dealing with, with sediment. Let's see, what else, uh, as far as that goes, anyway, there, there, that's, that's the road department. Uh, fair board, I attended the fair board meeting on the eighteenth, and um, was made aware that progress is being made to get the fair ready. Brad's on the board, and they're, they've got a new board, and everybody's working together. We had um, we, we, there's a lot to learn, a lot of catching up to do, but I think it's going to be, um, we're gonna have a good fair. Uh, let's see, uh, juvenile department, we gave you a few rundowns of what, what happened for juvenile, th, these are May numbers, because we're not through with June yet. So, so May, um, two staff members completed sex offender treatment training, two staff members attended suicide prevention for youth, four staff members completed de-escalation training. There are three grants for a total of sixteen thousand nine hundred dollars were applied for and granted. They extended the Oregon Health Authority contract for problem gambling, and that's a thirty thousand dollar um, lump there. Applied for and granted additional twenty thousand dollar tobacco prevention funds, and they have applied for impending additional opioid funds. So the, they're, the juvenile department is sort of setting the standard on, on, on looking for revenue where they can get it, so they can augment um, the, the amount that the county itself has available to help them run. They, they perform, they provide uh, numerous services, but of course, the most important thing, I mean, I have the stats for the, for, for the, the numbers of, of uh, I think, let's see, they had a, they had twenty-seven allegations and referrals, uh, ten felonies, fifteen misdemeanor, of, of those allegations, referrals, ten. There were ten felonies and fifteen misdemeanors, one violation. Um, we had, of, of the people involved, four were less than thirteen years old. Eight were between the ages of thirteen and fifteen, and um, fifteen of them were over fif, between fifteen and the age of majority, so. Anyway, they, they had a busy month. They had um, two separate detention trips. We, we can't detain minors in Curry County, we don't have facilities for them, so they have to take them, I think, to Douglas County?
Douglas and Josephine.
Douglas and Josephine, okay. So that, that, it's a, it's a, it's a challenging department to be a part of. Um, they're, they're, I just wanted to tell you, they're, they're busy, and, and that's part of what, that's part of what we have to look at when we're looking at, at spending county dollars. We have to spend them in the most efficient way possible, um, so that we can, it's whether you can, you know, we can affect people the most, in the best way. And I think, I think spending money on, to trying to, to affect youth is probably one of that, one of your better, better ways of, of approaching that. Uh, for parks, let's see, in May, they um, Parks Department got a new generator um, up in uh, up at Lobster Creek. They got new camp hosts at Boys' Cove, they made major repairs to their mower, they did a, a big tree job at Boys' Cove to improve the campground and safety. Um, let's see, they cleaned up Lobster Creek- They cleaned up Lobster Creek, they've been um, uh, Boys Cope has been fully booked up, booked out as of, I mean, they, they were done with that by May, so it's been a, they've. They've been doing really well with that, I think that we um. Let's see, they've, let's see, they've uh blown out and repaired at Lobster Creek, let's see, uh, the well was blown out and repaired at Lobster Creek to improve, improve water flow to allow for faster tank fillups and for cleaner water. And basically bring that place kind of into a more modern scenario. Also on that topic, um, there's been some work done, uh, the surveyor's been down uh. Working on the lines at Social Security Bar because that's the thing that, that uh Parks is now responsible for, so we're, we're working on, on determining what that, that whole role is gonna be. Let's see, building and uh septic and code compliance monthly report, um. Building Division received several, seven commercial uh applications and thirty residential applications, they issued eleven commercial permits and thirty six residential permits. They had eighteen commercial inspections and a hundred and sixty five residential inspections. They issued one commercial certificate of occupancy and six residential certificates of occupancy, uh, let's see, Building Division issued two commercial certificate of satisfactory completion and seventeen residential certificates of satisfactory completion. There were eight applications for the onsite septic program, ten permits were uh issued, uh, let's see, code enfor- code enforcement. That was in a state of flux, so I'm gonna bypass that report and then planning, um, Planning Division received thirteen planning clearances, uh. Five short-term rental applications, three administrative decisions, one partition application, one lot line adjustment vacation, one pre-application conference, uh. Planning Division issued twenty day notices for um, for short-term, short-term rentals, which I think we're talking about at this time, so uh, the Planning Division wrote final, final notice for one administrative decision and three short-term rentals. So that's that for planning, um, Treasurer's Office. May was the first month of taking over the Treasurer's Office for retiring Treasurer Dave Barnes, the first couple of days of May began, as it always does with the office, I was supplied a tax distribution list. From the Assessor's Office and sent out funds, the number tax, number taxing districts we have in Curry County had distributed two hundred and five thousand five hundred and forty dollars and thirty five cents to fifty one districts, I then sent out the report to every. District to inform them of funds received, after this, I provided our finance department with my list of deposits so our bank reconciliations can be done to verify funds. They were brought in by our departments, after this, I provided the Board of Commissioners with my monthly report stating our current balances on the county's accounts, other than those items, just staying on top of deposits and providing timely revenues receipts to our departments. In May, one highlight I had was distributing funds, uh, the county received from the U S Department of Agriculture Forest Service Division, these funds are twenty five percent receipts from U S Forest Reserve. That um represents rental, sales of timber and other source, sources for the period ending September thirtieth twenty twenty three. These monies are divided seventy five percent to the public road fund and twenty five percent to the public schools, in total, one point seven three six million dollars was received, over one point two million dollars went to our road reserve fund. And over four hundred thousand distributed um between our three school districts, uh, new treasurer is working with finance to determine the extent of the tax payments made in error to incorrect beneficiaries. Resulting in an unknown liability to recover, misdirected funds and deliver tax revenue due to unpaid taxing districts over the last couple of years. And that's, that's all the reports I have for tonight.
All right, next up on the agenda is elected official updates, I don't see any uh elected officials here other than Commissioner-elect Hollinger. Patrick, did you wanna say anything to this evening?
Uh, this is again, just to kind of piggyback on what Lynn and, and Mark said, uh, it's been a bit painful this last month. Having to uh be witness to all of the, the changes and the hit each department has to take and the sheriff's department has to take, but. You know, this, this really is the ultimate reset button for our county. Uh, our finances are now in check and will be monitored monthly going forward. Um, the departments are, have been restructured and new policy is being put in place uh for uh future. Commissioners or department heads to have a, a roadmap to continue to follow, uh, so I, I just wanted to say, I know it's a difficult job, it's one I'm prepared for. But uh, thank you guys for the hard work you have to do and the uncomfortable tough decisions you have to do and then. Um, helping keep the bus moving forward with the changes that need to be made to make our county uh successful again uh. Uh, structurally and financially, so thank you guys and uh, you know, you guys have my support.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thanks, Patrick.
Now onto Commissioner updates, Commissioner Herzog.
So the last meeting, we um decided I would go to that Merkley Town Hall.
Uh huh.
And so I did and um fifteen minutes before that town hall meeting, there was a few of us, myself and um two mayors, Brookings and Gold Beach. And a guy from Ford Orford, and there was just a few, we got to meet with Jeff individually and um. You know, he said all the right things, that he says no to, he's telling the governor no for Boham, that's a, that was a big issue. Um, he's doing really well with supporting the Coal Rivers Fish Hatchery and uh trying to get money, more money, Pat probably knows more about this. Cause I saw him sitting with Steve Byerland and Steve's a, is going after this big time. And well, that'll just be a huge, you know, and I just reiterated to him that, you know, the Rogue River is a biggie for Curry County, so um. Yeah, it was a good, it was a good meeting and uh. It was very well attended, um, so I think something was already said about Lobster Creek and Four H Camp and so uh next Thursday, next Thursday morning, if you wanna get up early and meet me up there, I'm making. Buttermilk pancakes at six o'clock in the morning, so. For a hu- I'm gonna make two hundred and fifty pancakes.
At Four H Camp?
I've done it before and it's a.
Yeah.
It's a trip, but it's a good, it's a good thing, yeah.
Get some helpers.
Yeah, that's it, sir.
All right, Commissioner Tross.
Um, first off, I just wanna say uh thank you for that detailed report, uh Director Fitzgerald, I think uh one of the things that people can expect going forward is um on the um. On the meeting that we have of the, the third Friday or the third Thursday of the month, um, we will hopefully be seeing. Uh, updates similar to that, um, so that the public understands on a monthly basis what the departments um are, are working on and achieving. I, I'm pretty sure you two received this email, um, as I did, cause I see that you're C C'd in it, along with the um. Commissioners from Douglas and Kooz, um, from um Senator Brock Smith and so uh. Yeah, you know, I don't know, just try to get your guys' take. I think, I see the, I see what the, what Senator Brock, Brock Smith is attempting to, to work towards um by getting. Detailed um information from our departments uh sent to um the legislators, including the governor and respective um heads. Of, you know, of departments, um, meaning clerk sends it to Secretary of State and the governor, assessor takes it to Department of Revenue and the governor. So the, so the South County, South, South, Southern, the Southern Oregon District um is uh, is represented um with the understanding of what's, what, what, what we're all going through financially. Um, Douglas, uh Douglas County had to make severe cuts in their county um personnel, along with Kooz and Curry and. We are seeing what we are seeing, what we're witnessing is um. The, in real time, the uh. The, you know, the, the, the far out ripple effects of the. Halting of harvesting the O N C timberlands and so all of the tim- all of the O N C counties, um. Number one, uh, have the lowest tax rates um in Oregon, cause it was subsequently offset by those timber revenues and are now facing, um, all are facing. Some fairly strong financial uh pushback, so uh if this helps in educating some of the legislators. Who don't think of us that much down here on the south coast about the scenario that we're being put in and if there's any legislative maneuvering that can be done, that could um. Assist that, um, then I think we should, we should, we should participate.
Agreed.
One of the asks is that um a representative from our commission kind of write a. Uh, full, you know, kind of a scope budget synopsis for the county, um, and so I didn't know if you were interested in doing that as chair.
Um, what, however you guys recommend proceeding, um, I did get that uh email from Senator Smith, that was a really well-written email. Um, and A O C has already responded to it too.
Yeah.
Uh, right, right before the meeting, we got a response from A O C, so um, what, whatever you think is right, I know the, the natural resources is kind of uh. Something that you are very much in touch with, so um, you know, I, I'd be okay with you doing it, for sure.
I'll, I'll, I'll work with uh Ted and, well played. Well done.
I'll second that.
I'll work with Ted and Rubia. Uh, to, to write that, well. Lobby back at me, okay.
Pretty good, yeah.
I tried to get you there, okay.
You did.
Um, all right, then I will, I'll work with Ted and Rubia, we'll get that done.
Let's use our, our, our people where they're best suited and you, I'll, I'll be honest, you write, you write much better than me, so.
Can you send him a whiteboard?
But that would help too, cause he is really good on a whiteboard, but I'll help you, I'll help you any way I can, but you definitely write better than me.
All right. Other than that, I just wanted to notice, you know, that um. The. The gravity of the scenario that we went through on uh the, the budget process over the last month. It does not, it doesn't fall short on anybody, um, you know, we, we are in. I think larger than full recognition of the impacts to uh individual families, um, departments and the community that we're going to be. Um, and are currently being felt by the um. By the decisions we made in budget, so I just wanna make sure that um, that we, that acknowledge that and, and. You know, as we move forward to approve the budget, um, that we. You know, I heard a, a really good anal- um analogy, um, but statement, um, you know, at this point, we can either. We can either become Cave Junction or we can rise um and rebuild like Phoenix and so I think. I think we have the energy and drive to, to do that and, and duty, so. That's all.
All right, I have a couple of things, um. The first thing is uh obviously many, many of you, the public have been following um the budget process and the difficult decisions that we've had to make. We've had to cut five open positions and seventeen point five uh employees. Uh, had to be laid off and um several of those were people I consider to be friends and this was a very difficult decision. To make, having to sit here in this chair and do that, knowing the impacts it has on families, uh. Spouses, kids, et cetera. And. And we as a community have some challenges as a result of that, we will all feel the effects of those cuts, for sure. So um relating to feeling the effects of that, um, I, I will, right now, what's happening, just so the public understands, is. The unions become involved when you make cuts like that on who gets cut, who gets bumped, who bumps who within the, within the county, within the contract that the county has with the union. That's how all of that takes place, all of those things are happening now, so once that is complete and the dust has settled from that. Um, I plan on doing two things to keep the community informed on what the effects of the cuts will be. We will do a press release once that is over, which will outline what services will be impacted by those cuts. And the other thing, and you heard a little bit of it tonight, you heard some statistical information from the Director of Operations, that is going to continue in a very big way. Um, in fact, I want to include the Sheriff's Office in um presenting that statistical information on a regular basis because. Uh, we as a community need to know where we stand with public safety and I think that's important for the, the public to know and understand. Because the public is going to have to make decisions in the future about uh how they direct us to proceed. So uh expect to see and hear more of that statistical information, um, those numbers are really important, the juvenile department, for example, I, I know. I, I see the work they're doing, right, I, I mean, I can, I can sit back and watch, but when you actually hear the numbers and you hear the volume of work that they're doing. And uh, uh, I mean, all of the felony cases. You know, you can see that changing, that, that environment in, in the juvenile department changing and just by hearing that statistical information, so. Expect to see and hear more of that and, and we will keep you informed on what the, the cuts to services will look like. There's a couple of important meetings coming up, uh, one is the Fair Board Meeting, which will be uh July second at five thirty. There's a bunch of changes, that we, we have a really good fair board in place right now and, and a, a fair board manager or a fair manager that's just hit the ground running, Terry Hughes. Um, she's got a couple of great ideas, um, we've got some really innovative people on the board that are, are, are wanting to make some changes. Uh, we're discussing everything from parking to uh, uh times and operations of the fair, uh, future events, changes in the infrastructure there. So I'd really encourage the public to pay attention to that if you have an interest in the fair, um, one, an example would be uh, one of the things being considered now is. Having a shuttle with some off-site parking to ease the parking issues and a shuttle to transport people from parking to the fair. Um, there's some ideas like that being floated around and, and a lot of changes, so our, our meetings are, are recorded, you can hear them. Um, and uh, but I would also encourage people to attend them again, July second, five thirty, and that's at the fairgrounds. And then next Thursday evening, here in the B O C, we will have a special meeting at five thirty and that will be uh to adopt the budget. So any of the public is of course uh encouraged to attend that meeting uh or watch that meeting for further information regarding. The, the Budget Committee's recommendation and how that will uh proceed. I wanna, I wanna also update everybody on some conversations I've had with Kooz County um and Commissioner uh Taylor. They're in a difficult position as well, um, it's kind of apples and oranges, you think that it wouldn't be, but it, it really is, the population is different. Their funding sources are different, they still do get some money from timber, um, and the, the, the population they have and the amount of. Uh, tax revenue that comes in, they have a great, they have a higher tax, property taxing rate and more people, so again, the numbers are very different. But I, I spoke to Commissioner Taylor about, uh, you know, their levy failed, uh, how they're going to proceed, he's got a couple of ideas regarding a. A sales tax and a sales tax swap where they would impose a sales tax and then. The people wouldn't pay the property tax that goes to the general fund and he's been holding some town halls regarding that. And um just to see what the level of um interest would be in something like that. And also I've been running those numbers and trying to look at sales taxes and public, uh, former Commissioner Pash came in and mentioned a public safety tax. Looking at, at, at that and following up on that presentation. And what I found out is that in this county. The difference between Curry and Kooz is in Kooz, they could do a two percent. Uh, sales tax, which would generate about twelve million dollars, but here in Curry County. Our, our revenue is different, it's much lower, so what I found was it was around two hundred thirty million dollars in total revenue. So if we were looking at some type of a sales tax, it would have to be to get what we need up in the fives. need up in the fives or sixes. And that's a big ask, too, you know? Uh, Mark mentioned earlier in his public comment that, you know, part of the problem was we asked for too much, and that's a big ask for something like that, and that's total. That's not, you know, Kuz is considering, uh, not taxing groceries and not taxing prescriptions, but that's our total, uh, revenue for the county. Uh, and th- these are just all rough numbers that I'm initially looking at to see if any of that is workable, and, uh, and I'm facing a lot of challenges when it comes to that. But I, I will continue to be in contact with Commissioner Taylor and, and other Commissioners, and we're communicating regularly, uh, about just trying to come up with a way to solve this funding problem that we all face. And then, finally, I want to end on a positive note, uh, which, if you guys remember back last year around November, uh, Mike Lang retired from parole and probation, you guys remember that? And we hired Thomas Edwards to replace him in parole and probation, that was, uh, back last November, and, uh, he's had to go to a DPSST training for that. That's a, it's a challenging, uh, course, uh, and, uh, anyway, he's, he's just completed that training, and, uh, he's, he's coming on board now with that DPSST certification parole and probation, and he also placed very near the top of his class, so we're, we're getting somebody, uh, really good there, and it's good to have him. That's a critical position to public safety, and, um, thank you for your hard work, Thomas, and, uh, look forward to, look forward to see you getting after it. So that is all that I have, and we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone.